Can you think of the moments that it's felt most rewarding?
Um, when we were, when we are able to do something for students that, that, that students have been asking for. Particularly, I remember when students and it was a, a lot of students showed up at a board meeting. Students don't come to board meetings and they can to testify to say, we don't see ourselves. These were black and brown indigenous students. They say, we don't see ourselves in the curriculum that we're being taught. And started a campaign to include ethnic studies. It's now a requirement for graduation. Students have to have one semester of ethnic studies.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
I need you to tell me something about your son, Councilmember Jeremiah Ellison, who I enjoy watching on the city council. Do you, do you have any stories that you can tell us? Maybe there may be a little embarrassing for him that.
You want embarrassing stories that, um, yes, yes. I do. It happened a while ago, but he got a stomach illness. He might've been two and had a lot of diarrhea and walked around the house doo doo all day long.
Oh, no.
Yes. But I, I'm if we don't, that's not appropriate that I don't have to tell that story. But that once, that one comes up, we do like family dinners on kids' birthdays. And it's like embarrassing stories. So that's one. More recent, I don't have any embarrassing stories recently.
You already really embarrassed him with the diarrhea story. Feel like we got him good. That was more than I was expecting. I feel more protective of him than you are, apparently.
And he was two. And so, yeah.
Wow, that's some good stuff. That is a great way to lead into the episode. This is the Wedge Live podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, and we're, this is the third school board candidate that I'm speaking with. Kim Ellison is running for reelection to an at-large seat on the Minneapolis School Board. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the invitation. It's my first time on Wedge Live.
Yes, you are a first timer. We don't talk to a lot of school board candidates. I think I did some a couple of years ago. It's a scary topic because people are very exercised and passionate and sometimes angry about schools issues.
Yes. Well, if, if it deals with their children, I understand the passion. They, they care about their children. I said to Jeremiah once, I'm like, you know, people care about stoplights and street lights, but not like they care about their children. He was like, Mom, is that all you think we do at the city? No, but they really care about their children.
Do you have debates about who has the, the tougher, gets the more tougher job, gets the more vitriolic feedback?
No, I think we all, I think we all agree that it's, it's me.
Probably is. I don't doubt it. More, uh, more vitriol than public safety, I would, I would imagine.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
So the, the budget seems like we have been in budget crisis with the school board for years. And I can't nail down, you are number three of the candidates I'm talking to, District Six and at large. And like, I can't nail anyone down on like how they would fill the budget gap. Like what would they cut? Uh, where, like, what, what is the solution there? I know it's like a political loser to name what you're gonna cut before you win.
And, and while that's my job is to balance a budget, I, I don't want to be the only one who makes that decision. And so I was having, I've been having conversations with current board members, community members. We are about to talk about board priorities so that staff can then set a budget. And I want to have those conversations in public. So what a public field is, you know, understanding that we can't do both after school and something during the, you know, what's important to public. I want to hear those, I want to have those conversations first.
Right. And so it's, it's not, you can't really name what you would do.
Right. And then I don't know if you've been watching, but the board is just now starting their budget priority discussion.
I haven't been watching. I, so I have prepped for these, but my prep does not include watching school board meetings. You know, I was thinking, I have watched many, many, many hundreds. It feels embarrassing to say hundreds of hours of planning commission meetings and you were on the Minneapolis Planning Commission for a while.
Planning for two years. Yep.
Maybe we could bond over that. You have any like vivid planning commission memories? Or is it all just faded away?
No, I remember once the planning commission wanted to set some boundary. Like it was around pay for, um, constructing. And I remember one of the, um, somebody from a construction crew came in and he's like, let's just let the market determine this. And I remember saying, yeah, but the market hasn't fixed this yet. And so maybe it's time for the planning commission to start setting limits.
Right.
I don't know. That was not very popular with him anyway.
What, what was the topic there?
It was, we wanted to, um, it was around affordable housing. For every, um, project that was created, you had to have so many units of affordable, um, units in the apartment building. Yes.
Inclusion, inclusionary zoning?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Did I read correctly in an interview, uh, Minneapolis Schools Voices, that you're the longest serving member of the school board?
Currently the longest serving member. Yes.
And 2012.
2012. Yeah, I was appointed.
That's about when I moved to Minneapolis and shortly thereafter started paying attention to, to politics. That is a long time. And like, do you remember why you decided to get involved? I'm always curious, like, it, you must have known this could be potentially painful. It could wreck my life.
No, no, I didn't know. I mean, so my first entry into Minneapolis School Board was an appointed position. There was a, a director who was, whose family was moving out of state. She was in the last year of her second term and they needed to, the district needed to appoint somebody to finish the last 12 months. And, um, I, I remember being involved. I had been teaching, but at the current, at that time I was a member of the Parents United for Public Schools, which is advocating at the, at the Capitol for public school funding. And I was an advisory board meeting, a, a member on the, um, Learning Works at Blake. And I could not do these, these activities and be a school board member. And, um, I remember saying, oh, well, you know, if I miss these things, it was for one year term. If I miss these things, I just won't run for election and I will do this for one year. What? So 12 years ago. And here I am.
So does that mean you like it or are you being held against your will?
No, but I, I do, it's like, a lot of times like is a, I feel like like is a strong word. But I find myself saying, but people are like, well, when do you do fun stuff? And I'm like, you act like what I, I don't think what I'm doing is fun. And then even that sounds a little strong to say this is fun. But, but I, but I'm doing it and it's, it's rewarding for sure.
Can you think of the moments that it's felt most rewarding? Like what, what would have been those moments for you?
Um, when we were, when we are able to do something for students that, that, that students have been asking for. Particularly, I remember when students and it was a, a lot of students showed up at a board meeting. Students don't come to board meetings and they can to testify to say, we don't see ourselves. These were black and brown indigenous students. They say, we don't see ourselves in the curriculum that we're being taught. And started a campaign to include ethnic studies as, um, one of the courses being offered for students. At first it was an elective course, um, and they could choose African-American history, Hispanic history, South Asian history, Western African history. And but that was like the start of it. It's now a requirement for graduation. Students have to have one semester of ethnic studies to graduate. So that was pretty fulfilling.
So in an interview, you said that was particularly tough work. Like part of why it's rewarding, I assume, is, is because it was so hard to get done. Not only was it important, it was hard to do. Do you remember like why it wasn't, why it was so hard? Like what parts of getting that done was so hard?
Well, um, when I first got on the board, I understood that the state, um, that the, the budget, the money that the district got was really determined by state and federal government. I didn't understand how much impact the state and how much influence the state had on the work that the, um, school districts do. The state determines the, um, the core courses and the subjects that need to be taught even. And at the time, ethnic studies was not one of them. I remember working with some teachers, trying to see if we could find a, um, a legislator, either Senator or Representative, who would carry a bill making ethnic studies. One of the courses that students needed to take. When we weren't able to do that, I remember going to the superintendent and saying, okay, so even if it's not a state standard, isn't it something we can teach anyway? And, um, so it was just trying to figure out, you know, how to maneuver through all the hoops.
Can you think of other examples of like, uh, just obstacles, hoops you had to jump through?
Well, I rarely want to discuss, um, school resource officers, but that was a big one as well. It's a budget. It's a, um, it's a contract that gets voted on every three years, for three years. And, um, students often would show up or send information saying, we don't want cops in our schools. I had been on a couple of years approving this contract. And, um, we were getting to the point where we were, it would be easier to accept the contract if we could lower the cost of the contract. And our budget year goes from July 1st to June 30th. But the city's budget year goes from January 1st to December 31st. So when we're looking at our budget, we go to the city, we're like, hey, we want to decrease this cost. And the city is like, yeah, but we've already, it's already in our budget.
Right.
And so we, it was like, okay, well superintendent, why don't you go negotiate with the city before they kind, you know, they're starting their budget conversation and, you know, so it was trying to align, um, things like that to make sure that we, we can be part, have the conversation at least.
So what happened with that? I am ashamed to admit, I don't know, did Minneapolis Public Schools go back on that? Is it so many organizations like broke their contract with MPD or didn't renew it in that time? And a lot have gone back on it and.
We, um, canceled the contract and we have not retained.
Do you think that has worked?
I think it has. If you talk to students, they, um, they, they don't feel unsafe in school. Um, we, we created other positions to kind of cover, it's more like a counseling position that students can go to. And we have not had any, in, in terms of the school or, or staff and students in schools. And I have not, no one has contacted me to say, we need an SRO in the school. So I think it's been successful.
So here, here's the big question. What is so important that you would suffer through another term? I'm sorry for my negative frame on this, but anytime I talk to a park board member or a school board member, I'm astonished that anyone wants to do it. This is my negative framing. I don't want to, I don't want to color your, your answer in any way. You could be as positive as you want. You can tell me, stop with the negativity. Why would you suffer through another term?
Well, I talked about this being fun. I enjoy this work. It's, it's too important. The, the future of our children, I think, is just too important not to be involved. And I think I have a voice. Um, I'm willing to do the work. And, um, like we talked about my son Jeremiah, all four of my children are grown and, and doing really well. They all went through Minneapolis Public Schools. I want that for every child. Before I was on the board, I was alternative ed teacher, um, at a high school in St. Charles. And it was the same kind of thing. I want children to be successful, just as my children were successful. And so.
Are there big things you want to get done in the next term? Like obviously like resolving the budget crisis would be a big one.
Solving the budget crisis, I, um, I'm a big fan of Spanish dual immersion programs. All four of my children attended Emerson was, um, K eight Spanish dual immersion. We still have several programs, but it's very popular. Um, and I want to expand that. And so as our superintendent and other board members talk about transformation, we've been calling it school closing. My voice has always been, well, let's look at programs that are successful because maybe we can expand them as we transform this district and invite more parents and families into the district.
Here's an ignorant question, but I don't, I don't know if it was you who said this or another school board candidate I was reading about. Like, so obviously there's an influx of Spanish-speaking students into the district. Am I right to think there's potential like synergy between parents who want, uh, like dual language for their English-speaking students and students who are Spanish-speaking, learning English?
Yes. No, no, you, you're right. So our, our only growing demographic right now is native Spanish-speaking students. We're losing numbers in every other demographic. And dual immersion works really, really well when you've got 50% native Spanish speakers and 50% native English speakers. Um, and so absolutely there, English speakers are learning Spanish, Spanish speakers are learning English. And so there is that synergy. It, it kind of falls hand in hand. In addition to native Spanish-speaking families being interested in the program, having native Spanish speakers, um, available to be in the program as well, kind of fits the motto.
I was interested to learn about you, that your mother was from the Dominican Republic, spoke Spanish. And then as I think you're 10, 10 years old, you said, uh, was not allowed to speak Spanish.
Yes. She had a much older father who was, um, who I, I, without knowing him, I call it like his, his dying wish was that this daughter have an American education. He had a much older, it was my mother's half brother, who was already married, living in the States. And so he sent my mother to go live with her half brother, who became her father and his wife. And they said, you know, this was probably the 50s, early 50s. It's about assimilation. Do not speak Spanish. She was in fourth grade and won the fourth grade spelling bee. I mean, this was, this is like my mother's like myth. If she came to the US and her first year in the US, she won the spelling bee. These are English words, right? And, um, and so this is what I had heard my whole life. This happened when she was in the fourth grade and then shortly before she passed and my mom was not known as having a good memory. And I remember a few years, um, late in her life, she goes, you know, I think I remember that winning that spelling bee because the teacher reprimanded all the other students for letting this native Spanish speaker beat them in spelling English words. She was like, it was, yeah, she was like, it was not good. But this was one of my mom, you know, my mother was, she became a teacher. So education was big for her and her family.
I'm getting all my question ideas from these interviews in Minneapolis Schools Voices and Sahan Journal.
Yes, yes.
Anyone who wants more on school board candidates, I recommend those interviews. I'm going to read a section of the Minneapolis Schools Voices interview you did with Melissa Whitler. And she asked, do you think the CDD accomplished what the board intended for it to do? And you said, no, because we never followed through on it. And then a little bit later, you said, now, as we talk about this, families still don't know which programs, which neighborhoods create schools that are sustainable. We don't know. And so me, person who doesn't follow schools politics, this went a little bit over my head. So I thought it was a good, a good place to ask you to like elaborate and talk to us like we don't know what's going on. Like what, what was the CDD meant to accomplish? And like, what didn't the board follow through on that would have made it successful?
Okay, sure. So the, um, we had known, like you pointed out, we've had a budget deficit for years. Um, and we knew that our, our physical footprint was probably larger than the number of students than it needed to be. And so the board spent a couple of years talking about priorities, values. And, um, what does that mean for the district? When we decided, you know what, let's, instead of just picking a bunch of schools, saying, these are the schools that we're going to close, let's see if we can create sustainable system. And if so, or sustainable building even, and if so, then we don't need to close that. So the CDD was supposed to identify buildings that would be sustainable. We, we, our research folks did an amazing job when we redrew the, we redrew boundary lines for our neighborhood schools. And those lines were based on the number of students that lived in that neighborhood who already attended a Minneapolis public school. And the story was, the goal was if every student who already attended a Minneapolis public school in that area attended that neighborhood school, then that school would be sustainable. So we were supposed to do that for, you know, redraw the lines and let the schools attract the families and then go back in two years and say, did that work? Did that happen? Was the school able to attract the families? Is it sustainable? If we had followed through, I think we'd be having a different conversation right now when we talk about whether or not we need to school, close schools or which schools need to be closed. I don't know if the, and I'd still like to see that information. Are neighborhood schools sustainable in their neighborhood? Did they attract enough students?
So it's a data thing, like.
It's a data thing.
You haven't had the information returned to you? That seems like a big problem, right?
It does seem like a big problem. We also had a big turnover in the district. The superintendent, the person who was superintendent when the CDD started, um, left. We had an interim for two years. Now we have a new superintendent. Uh, two years ago, we had five brand new board members, which is more than half of the board. And so there was a lot of turnover in board members and staff. And I think it just fell through. The, the research people were working on the CDD. They were no longer in the district. And so, and if I, I've been asked about, you know, when I started on the board, it was the first year they were going to district seats with at-large. Before I was on the board, it was all at-large members. And I've been asked, um, how that's working. And I think that's working fine. If I were to change anything, I would like to see board members all elected at the same time. Cause every two years right now, we have a turnover. I'd like to see all board, have nine board members elected, all, we can all work together for four years. Follow through, because it's going to take, it's not going to take a year or two to see change on any initiative that we, we make.
Right. So is there like an administration problem? And if, if so, is it like, has it been resolved? Cause it feels like if the point of the CDD was to test these things out and get data back and like, we never got the data.
Yeah. Like I said, there was a change in staff. So yes, it would be a staff, you know? We would, we were waiting for the information from the staff. But we've had staff turnover as well.
Would you vote for the CDD today?
Um, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sure because I think it would be different today.
Okay. In the Sahan Journal interview, you mentioned the footprint. So when your kids went, went to Minneapolis Public Schools, the, there was 50,000 students and there was a certain footprint of buildings and staff and services.
Yes.
And that has remained the same, but the number of students has been cut by like 40%? Is that accurate?
Yep.
So does that mean buildings and, and schools need to close?
I don't know if it means, means buildings and schools need to close. Programs may need to be combined. I'm glad you asked about buildings and schools because I've been talking about buildings and schools as two different things. Programs may need to combine. But, and, and then I need to see how much money can we, would we actually save if we closed a building? You know, it would be utilities. Maybe, um, do we, do we save enough money closing a building to justify having an empty school in a neighborhood, which is really, really hard at neighborhoods?
So it seems like, I cannot remember a time when we weren't talking about the, a s- school budget crisis in Minneapolis. I have lived here like 12 years. I can't remember a time when that wasn't a topic. And so I'm wondering, like you talked about not getting the data back on the, on the CDD. I'm wondering if there's like a governance, uh, problem here. Like when I watch, what I'm familiar with is City, uh, City Hall and like, I see projections like five years out on the, on the budget. Here are what we're projecting, like what we're going to need to be paying people in five years. Here's what we're projecting the money coming in is going to look like. So they can kind of adjust as they go along. City has also moved to like a two-year budget horizon. So we look ahead two years on the budget, uh, every year. So like, I'm, like, did we not see some of this stuff coming?
Our CFO, our financial officer would say, yes. And he's been saying, um, we need to make change, which is why we do performers now every year. It's like, if nothing changes, here's the projection. And, and so those are the, the only projected numbers we ever really get. Not if we make this change, then this is what it would look like. But it's always been, if nothing changes, here's the path that we're on.
Should we have gotten on a different path sooner? Like, can you think of?
Yes. Yes. I would say yes. And but, you know, also hindsight's 2020. We don't know this, and I guess the last four years, we're, you know, during the pandemic, it was really, really hard to be able to see what tomorrow would let, look like, let alone next year. But I think we, we should be doing, um, and we could be doing a better job in projecting. Not just if we change nothing, but if we close this, this many schools, this is what the budget would look like. So we can at least have those numbers.
Right. So we talk about enrollment and so two sides of the budget question are like, how do we increase enrollment? What cuts do we make? And so, uh, like when you talk to voters, your constituents, uh, do you have a sense of why families are leaving the district? Like, is it a general sense of this school is not up to snuff, like in a broad way? Or is it a lack of like specific programs, like music or a language? Do, can you, can you gauge that from conversations you've had?
At one point, like years ago, I think it would be specific programs. Part of our, um, current strategic plan and, and part of the CDD was to make sure that every school had the arts and, um, language, language has been big, been trying to build that up. And so lately it's been more the, I need to leave because I don't see a future here. It's, it's not getting better. Now that we've been having transformation conversations for about a year and a half, two years, I don't know if the school will even be. Is the school going to close? But it's usually, it's usually around how well, you know, my student is going to be doing if they stay here.
Reader questions. Let's move on to reader questions since obviously my brain has stopped working.
Okay, all right.
School boards have the challenge of dealing with many passionate stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, teachers unions and administrators. How, do you do that well? Would you say you do that well? Can you brag about how well you do that?
I, um, I think I do that, do that well. What helps is having a reason why I'm making decisions and then communicating that with people. So I might disagree with somebody, someone might not agree that I'm supporting something or not supporting something. But I will always say. But I will always say, this is why I feel this way. And we can have that discussion. Um, and yeah, I, I think that helps, just communication.
Uh, let's draw a contrast with you and, and your opponent. What are we getting from you that we're not getting from your opponent?
Um, history, um, having done the work. Children who have been through the system. Those are the only ones I can think of.
Couple of questions connecting kids' mental health, uh, to smartphones and also, uh, transportation. So number one, what should the district's policy be with regard to reducing the influence of smartphones?
I think, um, what has been effective, we do have a policy on that. And what has been effective is our schools who are following that policy. Um, especially our older, our high schoolers, if we just let the principals and their staff um, make those decisions, follow the policy and that communicate that with their students. That's where it works best. Our policy committee will be looking at that policy specifically this month. So it will be before the board.
So you, is there a policy now, like an interim policy?
Uh, no, there's, there's always been a policy. I mean, I don't know always, but for years, there's been a policy. Um, and what I've heard from principals is, um, if you let them, um, lead with our power, with the district's policy, if you let them lead, they can figure out how to, um, decrease students and the, the use of phones when not necess- necessary.
So principals would prefer to set their own, uh, policies?
A, a, a couple of the principals that I've talked to, especially at your high school level, but yes.
That's a little bit surprising because I would prefer to have it taken out of my hands. So I could blame someone else. No, it's not, it's not me. It's the.
It's, it's, it's those, yes, the people over there. Yeah.
That's kind of surprising.
But I think it's working in the sub schools. It's, it's working with the current policy that we have. So.
Okay. Uh, the second part of that, transportation. With growing concerns about children's lack of independence and wellbeing, how would you work to create safe routes for walking and biking to school? Encouraging students to travel independently while reducing the heavy car traffic and chaotic parent drop off?
Cool. Um, we have, it, it, for this district, a number of years, it has depended on the neighborhood and how safe the perception is within neighborhoods. We've shortened that walking distance. Um, when we put our high schoolers on metro transportation, my youngest two were still in high school. And, um, that was not, riding the bus was not something they did often. Growing up, I was usually driving them around and, you know, a lot of cart pulling. Um, but I remember my daughter saying, when she was a sophomore or junior, that she liked riding the bus. Because it gave her a closer relationship with the city that she lives in. Now she knows how to get around. She knows how to do it on her own. She doesn't have to wait for somebody to pick her up. Um, I think we need to be, but if people don't feel safe going to and from the bus or even riding on the bus, we need to be partnering with that council, partnering with the city to ensure that we've got safe routes for our students.
Question about disabled students from a reader. My son is autistic and he is supposed to be in the least restrictive environment per federal policy, which we can think of as being the most normalized and mainstreamed environment for his classes and school experience. But often, even with the most well-intentioned teachers and staff, his experience has, has been separate from the vast majority of his similar aged peers. Even when in the same school, sometimes in the same classroom. This became and becomes especially glaring once disabled students enter high school. Uh, what are your thoughts on having an inclusive school experience for everyone compared to the current system? That seems to put students into narrow lanes.
Oh, that's, that's a hard one for me, just because it's, it's something I need to study. It's not something that I've gone through naturally. So I need to hear more from parents and family. Obviously least restrictive, um, is the most effective. Um, and I think it's an individual child experience as well. What would be least restrictive for one student is probably not least restrictive for another. Um, and so we need to make sure that families and staff are having those discussions about what is needed. Um, and we need to include teachers in that conversation too, because they might see something different. Expect something different.
Final reader question. Uh, what actions would you like to see from the mayor and city council? And, uh, maybe other levels of government. I'll throw that into
Sure.
To better support MPS.
Well, what I really appreciate is recently, um, state representatives, the council members and, um, county commissioners and school board members have come together to have that exact conversation. How can these, what do we need in Minneapolis Public Schools that is not education related? That our partners can help, can support financially or through action. And so those conversations are happening. Um, like I said, with state representatives, county commissioners and city council members. Um, and I'm excited about the work that that could bring about. So those conversations have just started. Um, and we are looking at how our partners can support the schools. When I was first elected, I was elected as the North Minneapolis representative for years. And a principal said to me, you know, the problem is our elected officials aren't talking to each other. And so for a couple of months, I focused on North Minneapolis, but we pulled together meetings like every other month. Um, just to say, you know, we all represent the same constituents, the same families. How can we be working together? And this was just on the North Minneapolis, um, side of the city. But right now, what I see it happening is citywide. And then with the state involved as well. So I think that's exciting.
The final question with all my guests, whether they're running for school board or not, is rec- a recommendation for listeners. What do you do that you enjoy that you think other people would have fun doing or help them relax? Like what, what brightens your day that you think other people should give a try?
Outside of school board?
Yes, yes, definitely, definitely outside of, you can't recommend go live tweet a school board meeting. Don't do that.
Don't do that. Um, swimming for me.
Okay.
It's, it's swimming. I, um, something I learned as a child, but for me, I felt like it was late in life, but it's something I've always go back to whenever life gets hard, which helps. So.
So when did you learn to swim?
I learned to swim when I was 11 or 12 years old. I, um, had, as an infant had bad earaches. And so a doctor put tubes in my ears. So I couldn't get, put my head underwater. Until I was 12 and we moved and the doctor took the tubes out of my ears.
And you finally have a chance to learn.
I finally had the chance to learn and I learned, joined a swim team, swim in high school. Um, I currently have multiple sclerosis. I had a doctor who, or my neurologist, like Kim, you don't mind swimming, that would help. Um, and it has, I've joined a master's swim team, which has since closed, but, um, yeah, I, even before then, even before my doctor recommended it at hard times, if I found a pool, I could swim laps. Um, everything just seems so much better. So.
So where do you go to swim?
Um, I currently go to V three.
Oh, is that the new place that?
That's the new place over in North Minneapolis on Plymouth. Yep.
Kim Ellison, it was nice to meet you finally.
Yes.
And uh, Kim Ellison is running for an at-large seat on the Minneapolis School Board, which means if you're a voter in Minneapolis, she will be on your ballot. Uh, election is November 5th, right?
Yes. Yep.
Uh, my name is John Edwards. I remember that. And this is the Wedge Live Podcast. Thank you for listening.